Could everyone please stand and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Need to do roll call. I can do a roll call, right?
Yep.
Alright. Het- Hetmer? Alright. Rirdan?
Present.
Welsh?
Present.
Studzinski?
Present.
Leighton?
Here.
Andrus? Present. Alright. Stasen- here, LaRose is absent.
She just pulled in.
Oh.
So we'll just note when she comes in.
Okay. Alright. Alright, moving on. Agenda, Foray, review for conflict of interest. Is there any conflict of interest? Would you please double check? Doesn't seem to be any conflict of interest. Moving on to 4B, approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Alright, the approval by the agenda was moved by Welsh, approved by Rirdan. Motion passes, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Moving on to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to say anything? Alright. No public comment. Alright, need to approve the minutes from July 17th.
We'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes Monday, July 17th.
Second.
Alright. Approval of the minutes of July 17th, motion by Leighton, second by Rirdan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, correspondences. Don't recall seeing any emails since the last meeting. Alright, moving on to number eight, reports. Garrison, would you please give us a brief for the treasures report?
Yeah, standard payroll as usual, purchasing card stuff that's already given us. Just our standard, our garden project continues to have those payments. Our trail agreement with the TART has been paid out, and Mitchell Creek restoration, but no big changes. Still some remaining balances we can look at for when we talk about the budget for this year.
Alright. Any questions on the treasures report? Alright. Thank you, Garrison. Sue is walking in the door, so maybe give her a minute to get situated and she can maybe give us a report on the community garden.
Oh, no. You're alright, take your time.
Hey, Susan.
Hi.
Sorry.
Oh, hey, so, wow.
Justin Tyra, community garden report.
Yeah.
Yep, so I, Sue and I got together, we've been reviewing lots of other community gardens, and we've kind of narrowed down rules, regulations, and we just need to type that up and get it in a more professional format other than a bunch of cut and paste documents.
There's rules and guidelines, and it's, I have to add that it's pretty thorough. And then I also talked with the horticulturist of that township or city today, so it's even going to be even greater. So it's a great wealth of information. Feel really good about it, so hopefully the rest of the board will feel good about the rules and guidelines. And I think our next step is the governance of that, so we have thoughts and ideas of that, too. So.
Alright. Any questions regarding the community garden? Alright, well, thank you for the update. Alright. Staff reports, is there anything there from you?
We are, I think a couple of months ago, I mentioned that we put out a request for proposals for Holiday Woodlands for visioning, community visioning, and doing survey and stakeholder interviews. We received one proposal back that was way over the amount we had budgeted for the project, so I'm going to work through that as your consultant on the visioning for Holiday Woodlands. So we're going to get started with some stakeholders. We will be looking for a couple parks commissioners to be involved in that discussion as well. But we're just getting started on that, so just an update on that component. The, I didn't put it on the agenda, I guess I could have done work groups or something. Geocache did talk after last meeting, we're still working through some of those details. I thought the agenda was a little heavy, so we didn't really bring back anything to talk about for this meeting, but you'll see more information on that in the future. And then I know that Beth had some information in the supplemental section, so I don't know if you want to talk about, say, Cornell or...
Whenever feels more fitting. Want to just do it all up?
Because we had a, because we didn't add them to the agenda, I guess, so the change order for our beautis and the Grace McDonald improvements. Do you want to talk about those now, or do you want to add them to the agenda?
I was going to make a motion that those be two separate additions, so I don't know, I'm sorry I was late. So that if we do an approval, if we put them in two separate items, then we could do them as two separate motions. And I was going to just put it as a 9B2 and 9B3. Just add those two items to the agenda. For a motion or deny, or whatever we want to do about those two.
How do we go about doing that after we've approved the agenda? Are we able to add things in mid-meeting? If everybody agrees?
You're right. While we generally follow progress rules, we don't do it to the detail. So I think if you all are acceptable to amending that agenda, you could do that.
Yeah, I think you could just, if somebody make a motion here to add that to the agenda, to amend it. Whoever wants to do that?
I'll move to amend the agenda to include the supplemental packet essentially, right?
The budget's in the supplemental, which that's already on the agenda, so our beautis five and
Grace McDonald.
Grace McDonald.
I was hoping we could still keep it under B. Put it under B2, so there's a B, Jen's Park, and then there'll be a B2, which would be our beautis, and then a B3, which would be Grace.
I'm fine with that.
I was just trying to...
I would be okay with that.
If we fit their staff, though, I would like to introduce Dan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, let's finish up staff and we'll make a motion.
Do you understand a motion for amending the agenda?
Yeah.
I made a motion.
I made a motion and added your additions to it, and I think you seconded it, and we have to vote on it.
I can second it.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, motion by Welsh to amend the original agenda, adding B1, Jen's Park, B2, our beautis, park upgrades, and B3, Grace McDonald Park, price adjustments. Second by LaRose, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Okay. Beth, what do you?
Just to make sure, we had it good for the minutes.
It got confusing.
So I wanted to take the chance to introduce you to our new Buildings and Groundskeeper. And before I do that real briefly, I wanted to let you know, as well with bringing on the retirement of Bob Burns and the new groundskeeper coming on, we also instituted two new contracts for the township. So one was for lawn maintenance at the township hall and the parks, and then for the bathroom cleaning at the parks. Both of those have gone really well with the vendors. And one thing that I particularly like is we have the bench strength. If, you know, someone takes a vaca- they have the bench strength. If someone takes a vacation, it's still done on time, gets done, and they've been doing a good job with it, so. But
Did you say trash removal, too? You said bathrooms?
Nope, trash removal, I mean, they'll, I think they do remove it from the actual bathroom, but Dan, Dan helps us with that. Yep. So, but with that, I wanted to introduce Dan. Come on over, Dan.
Over.
Stan Worsma, he is a paramedic with us, too. So while he is not full-time in Buildings and Grounds, he is full-time for us. And the nice thing that we thought about before hiring him was that when he is in Buildings and Grounds at the township, if he has the opportunity and there is a call, we can be our own backup. And that has happened two or three times, where he's been able to meet on-site or grab the extra rig, and we don't have to rely on our mutual aid, which might take a little bit longer, so. But he's been great to have on board, great sense of humor, don't let him miss you. But I will let him say hi to you, so thank you.
Any questions for me?
What's your favorite park, Dan?
Favorite park? Jen's is the most pa- or Grace is the most popular.
For sure.
I'm a quiet guy, so I love Killingsworth.
Yeah.
Jen's is a whole different challenge with the beach and the hotel owners, but we're
Are we building a relationship with them?
Yeah, actually.
For grooming the beach and all that?
I'm trying to.
They're stubborn.
There's been a lot of promises, and it hasn't been reciprocal. We allow them to use our parking lot or whatever, and it just never comes back around, but that was what's Josh's?
Werfel.
Werfel, yeah. I just talked to the GM of the Wharf Shore, because they grade that beach all the time with their quad and a rake, and then usually turn around on our beaches, like, why don't you just keep on going?
Yeah.
I was able to bring a tractor down there, and backfill, a lot of that sand filled in that sinkhole and stuff.
Okay.
I'll clean it up.
Appreciate that.
Definitely, so work ethic and unity done, and I think it's in a proposal is to improve Jen's to a stamped concrete walkway out there, which would be very long-lasting. And the new ones, the old ones, okay right now, but it's going to be needing some repairs.
Well, thank you, Dan.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
One other quick thing I wanted to do. We do have a volunteer for the little libraries, I think I've seen that.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Diane is just, she's terrific, she's a spitfire, and she's taken all the books home, combed through them, taken out the, kept the, all the ones that are great and appropriate for the little libraries. Some, when you say, well, what's not appropriate, you know, some of them are like from the schools, so they're great, but they are like packets, like school packets where they have, you know, like games in them, or learning things in them as well as the book, and so those are a little bit harder. So she's keeping the books and kind of parsing those out. She has it all organized over in the utility room at Grace McDonald, and has, you know, wanted paper towels and Windex so she could kind of spiff them up, and so she's, we really appreciate it. And her intent is to go out every week, and I told her, you know, just see how it goes. Go out every week, and you don't need to go for two weeks, great. If you need to go more often, just set your schedule. And she did mention right now, I think she's getting some books from you, you contacted her. But right now, after, they'll have those, and she'll go through those as well. We have a sufficient amount of books, so what we planned on doing is, just before we put out our newsletter each time, we'll contact her. If she's short on books, we'll put a notice in. If she's not, we won't, so.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
You know, Beth, something that we could ask her about is if she has anything that she'd like to add to the website about the little libraries?
We actually put her on there.
Okay.
And we can add more content, so.
Okay.
If you guys see it, have any links, let me know.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks.
Alright. Moving on to business before the Parks Commission, 9A, three-mile extension update.
Hey, good evening, everyone, here with you. I've got just this map that was just put together, I'm going to just pass it around for the Three Mile Trail Open House. And it's actually the first map that we've put together that actually shows the full trail system. So you'll see in orange, we've got, and I apologize, this is Elizabeth Calcutt, she's with TART Trails, a great partner, and I think I know most of you. Ally, I don't know if I've met you, but I'm Claire Carner, I'm the planner with East Bay Township. So just wanted to provide you with a quick update on the Three Mile Trail, as well as the Safe Routes to School. And so you'll see on this map, the green is what is existing. The orange is the proposed route for the Three Mile Trail, going all the way through mostly the conservancy property, running in between Grand Trevor's Academy and the Alta Vista, new manufactured housing community, and then coming all the way out to Hammond Road. And then you will see the Safe Routes infrastructure, and it got a little bit cut off. It extend, extends a little bit further. But in red, you'll see that there is a trail that's on both sides of Hammond Road, all the way to the Hammond and Three Mile intersection. And then on the south side, it extends all the way to the Chartwell subdivision. And then it comes all the way up Three Mile. It comes actually beyond the St. Elizabeth and Seton Middle School. It goes all the way down to the subdivision that's, that's right down there.
Cherry Ridge, yeah.
No, it goes beyond Cherry Ridge to the one that is to the east side of Three Mile.
Oh.
What's the name of the?
Just before Smith Road?
Yeah, yep, yep, so that's where Yeah, Saravaga.
Oh.
So as a part of this, Safe Routes to School, and so the, it's great, because these two, these two trail systems are integrally related to one another, you can't have one without the other. So it's exciting that they're kind of both coming to fruition at the same time, and we're kind of hopefully lining up the funding, so that they, the construction will be pretty close to, to the same time for both of them. You'll see on the, for the Three Mile Trail, we're planning one crossing, it's crossing Three Mile at the St. Elizabeth and Seton entrance, and so that's going to be a nice crossing, because that will bring kids from Verndale and Cherry Ridge, allow them to cross. Whether, if they're not going to the Catholic school, then they can get over to Cherry Knoll and to East Middle School, and then eventually on down to Grand Trevor's Academy. So this whole trail system is serving over 2,400 students. There's a ton of, you know, employment destinations along this whole corridor. There's a ton of existing housing and subdivisions, and a lot of planned, you know, new housing, a lot of multifamily that's coming online. So it's, it's super exciting that this is, that this is coming to fruition, and I believe you all received the invitation. But if you are available to come to the open house tomorrow night, would love to have you stop by. It's from 4:30 to 6:00 at the new Grand Trevor's Regional Land Conservancy Headquarters. So it's a really cool building, if nothing else, come and check out the building. But the open house will be an opportunity to see this route, provide feedback on kind of how you're accessing the trail, what mode of transportation you're looking to access, what, what locations you're going to access from, because we're looking at future crossings and connections across Three Mile Road to get to the western side of Three Mile, as well as we're looking to, the crossing on Hammond. We're going to have safe crossings at the Three Mile and Hammond intersection, but we're also looking at putting in a hawk signal, so that would actually be like a signalized traffic device that stops vehicles at that intersection. So, so we're just looking for more information about how you're going to use the trail, what days of the week you're going to use the trail, is it for transportation, is it for recreation, what types of amenities you're looking at, and it's just a nice opportunity to get more information about, about the trail. So Elizabeth has more detailed information on the engineering design side. We're working with OHM Engineering Firm, as well as the financing. So the Safe Routes to School, we've got that, we've got the financing there. We, as you'll recall, we received a grant for over a million dollars to actually build the trail. So right now, we're just working with another consulting firm, Prine and Newhoff, to do that design for the, for the Safe Routes trail system. But we are going to be needing to raise a lot of money for the, for the Three Mile Trail. It's a lot of boardwalk, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Claire. Nice to see you all. So we started just a little under a year ago with OHM Advisors, it's a contract with the township, for completing design and getting it all the way up to be ready to bid, so construction documents, construction ready. And we've been working on this two-and-a-half mile segment. As Claire mentioned, it extends, picks up where the trail currently ends, at South Airport, two-and-a-half miles south down to Hammond. And we were hoping around now to be wrapping design. We did have an opportunity present itself this spring with a property adjacent to the conservancies, existing Mitchell Creek Meadows, and between their property and Three Mile, that allowed us to have a more direct route. So that purchase agreement came at the end of May, we had surveys, we did a small contract amendment. And they finished survey in June, and we had a new design for that in July. So what you're seeing, what Claire shared, is the new alignment. We had hoped there would be more cost savings, unfortunately, it's just very wet. So while it does save some time for those using the route, it doesn't necessarily save cost. But it will be beautiful, and we'll be a little closer to Three Mile Road. So our goal is following tomorrow night's open house, is to wrap up design this fall and start working on applications for funding. This is, as Claire mentioned, relatively expensive project. We're looking at around 13 million dollars. And that's everything we've done to date, all the way through engineering, also a 10% maintenance fund, so that we have that fund to keep it clear and well-maintained on an annual basis, working with the township, and also factoring in contingencies and inflation. Our goal would be 2025, and whether or not that all happens in one construction phase or two will just largely depend on what type of funding we can access. So we're looking at this fall, hopefully a TAP grant, that's Transportation Alternative Program. We'd be working with the Road Commission and the township on that. Road Commission would have to submit that. And that funding could be available by 2025, if we were successful. It would be, it's, we're going to ask for a max amount, there is no max, but it's, it's not 13 million, whereas you have to get a little, some gap. And one idea would be a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant through the township, and applying for that this spring. It sounds like you're in the process of updating your rec plan. We'd love to work with you and see if that could be a project to submit for April 1. We have a great assistant with our grant applications, Carl Ferguson, I have some of that in commission, and he'll be helping us with TAP grant and talk about the trust fund grant as well. We're exploring additional opportunities, whether or not that's another Safe Routes to School, just because of the benefit of this trail to the schools and students accessing that. We're always open to ideas, if anyone has that, but that's about where we are at with everything. And just a note on tomorrow evening, it's come as you can, so there's no formal presentation, so you can come at 5:30, it works super smoothly, we'll be there from 4:30 to 6:00. Any questions?
I had a couple of questions. On the north side of Hammond, is there going to be a tie point to Alta Vista along the north side of the road? Or is, it's probably not easy, easy land to work with, I don't think.
Yeah, I can speak, so Alta Vista, it, there's no going to be direct tie to the kind of private property, but there's going to be easements along, so Alta Vista is providing some easements on their property that the trail will actually be going through.
Okay.
But in terms of accessing from the trail to Alta Vista, it'll be, it'll be from the, like, public right-of-way. There's, there's no
Off of Hammond?
Yeah.
Or Vander, Vanderloch?
Right, and there's, there's no planned trail in front of Alta Vista, but over time, the, the plan is to extend the trail all the way along both sides of Hammond to Four Mile and beyond.
Okay.
Hopefully in the near future, that will be a direct
So I know Hammond's a busy road, so
Yeah.
You don't have, yeah.
Not comfortable to ride up.
Yeah.
So that, just as far as easements go, that's something we're working with the township on the Alta Vista, also the Grand Trevor's Academy. Claire and the Township and Tart Trails have been meeting with landowners and the conservancy being our largest. We're also still wrapping up the acquisition of a property on the north end where the trail starts. Tart Trails is working on purchasing that and then handing it over to the conservancy.
I think I'm all set.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Hope to make it tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. All right, moving on to business before the Parks Commission, 9B. Looks like we have 9B1 now, the Gens Park. If you guys saw, there's an email from Brian from Wade Trim, and to keep this project going forward, looks like he's asking for six grand to get the, go through the permitting process and get a contractor lined up and whatnot. And to keep this project moving, we need to either pass a roll call vote to prove, given him six grand, get that project back up. So I don't know what everyone's thoughts are, but any questions?
Where will that money come from?
Um, I think-
The engineering?
Yeah, the Attorney and Engineering Fund.
What's the current amount right now if I've been there?
We have $42,000 budgeted and only three grands spent, so 39,000 left. Plus, we have $25,000 in parkland acquisitions, but I don't know if we're going to be able to buy any land this year. So we could think about moving that.
Well, parkland acquisitions, I think that 20, we were putting 25 grand a year aside for future.
Oh, rolling it over every year? So there's more than 25 grand on the count?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And I think we, didn't we, I could be wrong, didn't we use the 25,000 to put towards woodlands?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's enough in your Attorney Engineering Grant fees. You know, there's still more that's going to come in through the end of the year, but-
Yeah, we're only 7%.
Right.
Is that, is that part also of contract services, that engineering and?
Yeah, that's where we have all the contract services is in that line item.
In that same line item?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, outside of any special projects or, you know, something like that.
So after the work's done, is it going to be pretty much bringing the project up to speed to be ready to move forward if we got funding?
Yeah. So what, that $6,000 is going to be everything up to construction. So he's going to update the survey, get all the permits for it, update the drawings, put it out to bid. And we talked about that a little bit, putting it out to bid around the first of the year so that we could get somebody lined up to start construction in the spring, depending on what the numbers came back. So when we talk about the budget a little bit later, we'll have to say, okay, put some money in to actually do the work for Gens. But yeah, that 6,000 would be get us all the way to somebody breaking ground on it.
Yeah. I think you said rough cost would be anywhere from like 50 to 100,000 to complete the project. But we don't have those numbers until-
And there's only one way to get them.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, for, to dust it off after, after, spend a decent amount of time, I'm, I'm fine with throwing it. And plus, it brings it up to ADA, which is something we need to do anyways. You just heard Don, he wants it done. And you know, Bob before that was like, it's a nightmare. You got to replace boards every year, and there's nails sticking up, and kids running around barefoot like, Gens Park should be a crown jewel, and it's just kind of a small, little neglected spot.
Well, I mean, for, for $6,000, it gets it ready again in case we run into more money that we could utilize towards it. And depending on what the cost comes back, you know, it might be something that we can just budget outright for. But I mean, we don't know unless we have it done. And if projects sit too long, they tend to get forgotten about, things change, and then it'd be too little, too late.
How much is in that line item?
There's 39,000 left out of 42,000. So 7% has been used.
And this was a priority project for you in your last parking mark plan.
Right.
Even though it's not mentioned in this parking mark plan.
We just didn't know it was possible until recently, right?
Well, it's because it was going to be done. It didn't get put in that plan because it was like, oh, this is already a project that's done. It just has to be, the construction has to be completed.
Right.
So.
We went to put the shovel in the ground and then the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to, let's get it done before that happens.
A matter of timing. Yeah, I think that because the water has receded, it would be a good opportunity.
I think we still had to go through permits.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And he says that. That's point two of his scope and cost. I motion to approve $6,000 contract to get Gens Park back rolling.
I'll second that. Motion made to pass the $6,000 permitting and contract bid for Wade Trim. Motion made by Reardon, second by Andrus, all in favor?
Hi.
Is this the one you need a roll call?
Yes, roll call.
Oh, sorry. All right. We need a roll call vote for this. My apologies.
Excuse me if I mispronounced your name. Hetmer?
Yeah.
Okay. Reardon? Oh, what's your answer? Yes or no?
Yeah.
Who, Reardon?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Zinski?
Yes.
Sorry. Leighton?
Yes.
LaRose, yes.
Thank you.
All right, roll, roll call by LaRose, and motion passed. All right. All right, moving on to business before the Parks Commission, 9B2, the Arbuthous Park, cost changes. Beth is going to give us a little rundown on that.
So you have a description of what the changes are at the Arbuthous Park, the door locks. So we were just talking about the door locks at Grace McDonald, and I went back to check and contacted the engineer, and they weren't in the plans for the Arbuthous. So we'll just adjust that with the contractor, which is the electrician. And you see the amount for that. The decking material, and this has to do with the fishing pier. And that fishing pier, the flatwork on it was maintenance-free decking, however, the hand rail wasn't. And that's just not going to look very nice consistency-wise, plus maintenance-wise as well. And so we took a look at that and changed that. And that was just about three grand, which was pretty reasonable. And then the grills, as I was talking and looking at the, the plan, and we have grills over there, but we did remove the grills that had holes in them and weren't in good shape and so forth, and realized, you know, we're putting in two great ADA places, but the grills aren't any place that are ADA. And so we priced out ADA compliant grills. And so they swing away, and they're marked with a wheelchair symbol. And we've talked about putting them at the edge and just extending the concrete out a little bit to facilitate that. And so that price, that price, we don't have the exact one on that, and we'll have a different purchase order, change order for that. But you're looking at about 4,800 plus the cost of the concrete. So but right now, I'm just looking for the first change order and the second, which are the door locks and the decking material. I do want to mention the reason that we have the door locks are so that many, many parks and recs have issues with bathrooms that are kept open all of the time. And what this does, it locks them at a certain time of night. I think it's 10 or 11 at night after the park is closed, and then opens them in the morning. And we do that, and we tend to have less problems with somebody staying or camping out in that restroom.
So what time then would they automatically lock?
It's about 10 or 11 at night.
Oh, at night.
It's pretty, it's pretty late.
Does it like give a warning it's locking, or it just locks?
You know, I don't know, but-
That would be horrible.
We've never, you can always get out of them.
Okay.
Well, you just can't get in.
You can always get out of them. You just can't get back in.
I was thinking, like, what if they get strapped in there?
Yeah, we don't like anybody in there. But it's worked well at Grace McDonald. I know they have them at the county parks as well. So we just wanted to correct and, and put that in there, so.
Is that something that we've seen at other parks around here?
The Civic Center has some big knock, lock-in doors.
We have bathrooms that we keep open 24/7 through 65 at the Nature Center, and we never have problems with that.
That's excellent.
We'll just knock on wood and-
Yeah.
We keep not having problems.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. No, we have, and as you know, there have been some vandalism problems. I will say, as we have noticed the cameras, like put signs about the cameras, and we have added a couple where we've had some trouble areas. We're just not having any issues, and people are enjoying the park. And, you know, they're there. We don't monitor them. We only go back and look at them if there's an issue.
Sure.
So if there is an issue, let us know immediately, because it's really hard if you say like, well, seven days ago. That's a lot of material to monitor. Whereas if someone says, it was yesterday, much easier.
Did we, Beth, did we set aside some contingency fees?
You know, there, no, there was just the contract amount that we awarded Spence Brothers. And so we, we just did it at that. We didn't do, to my recollection, we didn't do like a 5% over 10% or anything like that.
I think we had mentioned a while ago, at least 15% as a contingency, so that it might help cover these.
Yeah. So what I would do is just, right now is just, you know, let them know that we're, these are relatively small in the scope of the project, which is pretty big.
But still, that money's got to come out somewhere. So I'm just asking again for future, whenever we're going through this route again, we need to make sure to remember putting a percent of contingency in that amount so that, for the unknown, because it always happens. Pretty much always happens. So we'd be foolish not to do that and put that in any budget.
Yeah.
I remember, I do recall a conversation about padding it, so.
And it doesn't always, even when you do that, sometimes it, you can see the next item on the agenda sometimes, so.
So what would be the total then for the locks?
98.7208.
But, okay, in the grills, he sent a correction of the 2,000, 2,032.
Yeah, I didn't add those in yet because I don't have the purchase order change on that. I don't have the, that will be coming in a, a purchase change order number 003.
Okay, so are we just approving the first two and then going back with the grills?
Correct. I move to approve purchase change order number one and two, total of $9,872.
And 08 cents.
And 08 cents.
Support.
All right, motion by Reardon, and second by LaRose to approve the purchase order, or potential change order for Arbuthous Lake Number Five Project. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
We need a roll call vote for that?
Oh.
No?
Interesting fact, it's urban legend that you need a roll call vote for anything regarding money. A lot of boards do that, but there's nothing that says that. Typically, what you need a roll call vote for are obviously ordinances. You must have a roll call vote for ordinances. And resolutions, depending how the wording is, most resolutions will say passed or whatever upon a roll call vote. So then you have to do it. So if you just think in your head, resolutions and ordinances, resolutions and ordinances, then you got it covered.
So any amount, then we don't have to do a roll call vote? Okay.
Unless there's rules from the trustees.
Unless you have some board rules. Yeah, unless you have some board rules of either yourself or, you know, another board.
All right.
All right, moving on to business before the Parks Commission, 9B3, Grace McDonald Park. Looks like the bleachers and then the cornhole games. Were you going to speak on this a little bit, Beth, there?
Sure, Mr. Chair. The, the bleachers are a little bit more straightforward. We have an updated quote, and that quote just came in 399.60, $399.60 over what we anticipated it would be. So I know that some of that is shipping, is probably shipping. And then they may have had a price adjustment to during the time we've been looking at this as well. So again, not an insurmountable amount, but over the amount that the previous motion was. We do have, I'm not sure if I included that in here, we do have a plan to have the old ones taken out, which-
Yeah, you did include it.
Okay. I'm super appreciative of the other township. They're very appreciative to get them, and they're going to handle pulling them out. Even though I told them, those benches are in there in concrete. They're like, we got it covered. So I'm happy about that.
Okay, so again, where's this money coming from? Where is the money coming from, from the 6,000? Is that going back from the 39,000 engineering contractual services?
So in your budget from last year, you had, let me just check the details on this. I think we have, we went over this last time, and I believe it was, hold on one second, and I'll just pull it up.
Like you said, 10 grand or less? Are you saying that's 10 grand?
Yeah, it was in the capital, capital-
Alden.
Grace McDonald Park Improvements, 970.753, various improvements to athletic equipment and fields. And so it was coming out of-
That's 30,000.
Coming out of the 30,000, though?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I remember trying to emphasize and save some money for wood chips.
Right. I really want to get the, the ones for safety.
Well, it's still like 20 grand.
Save some money for wood, they're not wood chips. They're a different one that I talked about earlier.
Engineered wood fiber, EWF. And we have measured for that. The company is taking a GIS of the footprint and determining the depth, I mean, with the depth, how much volume, and we'll be getting you a price on that.
Good. And then, okay, so all that's coming out of the engineering is that 6,000 for Gens, okay? So far, right? Okay.
Just, I did get some contact information of a vendor that does that mulch as well. I just forgot to give it to you, so.
Okay.
But it sounds like you already got it.
Well, I'll take it, too. It might be a different vendor, and it might be a different price, so.
What's the bid amount?
It's hard to get them. So you don't have a ton of choices. I'm sorry, what was that?
What's, do we have to go out for multiple bids if it's like a $20,000 quote?
So I haven't found many vendors to be able to supply it and spread it. So with that, I'm just requesting proposals and quotes from them right now. And I just have one that I've been looking at. So I'll be anxious to, to get that and see if it's the same or a different one, yeah. Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion for the $400 increase for the bleachers? I would move to approve the 399.60 increase to do the bleachers at Grace McDonald Park.
Support. But what's color powder coating? What color is the powder coating?
It is green. It's dark green. And I went over to take a look at it because we had talked about the blue. But when you stand at the courts, and I took pictures of it, I can show you, you don't see the courts when you're there. But what you do see is the dark green from the bathrooms, the dark green on the buildings. So it fits in more to have that dark green consistently. The courts, if you can think about it, are very flat, and that's the only place we have the blue. So you don't even see it from the ball field.
Right.
All right, do we have a support on that? Okay. So motion by Reardon, support by LaRose for the extra cost of $400 roughly for the bleachers for Grace McDonald Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll order them tomorrow.
Sweet.
Thanks.
On the cornhole addition, you can see the communication that I have had with Wade Trim. And Wade Trim is who I reached out to, to give you the information at the last time we talked about it, which was what's the best type of ground to have under it for the game and for ADA accessibility. And he had said, you know, really concrete, and then talked about the exposed aggregate concrete, just makes it look a little more, as he said, intentional. I like that word. It looks a little more intentional. So we talked about having some design that was a mix of the con- So, we talked about having some design that was a mix of the concrete, exposed aggregate concrete and plain concrete, you know, maybe putting next to the game board that would define, like, your toss zone. And as I was going to take a look at that and measure it, and I was like, okay, I can, you know, just call the concrete people, tell them what's up, and I was like, you know what? This could probably be done better than me just saying, "We need a rectangle with this in it." And I was like, we could make this a little more intentional, picking up on his word, with maybe just putting a little bit more towards it, not trying to make it a bigger project than it is, but having someone take a keen eye, like a landscape architect, to, okay, how could this, you know, be? Do we want to curve any edges, or do we want to put a bench here or there, that sort of thing? And so, I reached out to Scott, and Scott is one who helped design Arbutus. And he followed up with some questions, which I thought were great questions. I didn't really feel like I had the latitude to answer definitively, especially when he was talking about total budget, a schedule for the project. I could answer that one yesterday. I mean, yeah, we'd like it. But some of the others, so I thought you might want to just have a conversation on maybe if you want to do that or if we just want to go with that rectangle and get her done, and totally up to you guys.
Had we set a general construction budget when we first looked at the different options?
No, I didn't know, hadn't talked to any concrete contractors about even a general ballpark budget.
As long as we have some money left for the playground surfacing, I mean...
I'm trying to remember what the warming hut, is there connectivity between this area and the warming hut? Like, when it comes, is that...
There's not any planned, but again, there could be. And that could either be part of either project.
Well, I just think we need to kind of figure out if we did want it, you know, we want to include it and lay out.
I mean, there always would be, remember, we talked about potentially improving that aggregate that's there into just like a concrete. That does connect it because you would go down by the handicaps parking spaces and then over to the things, but we could bring something around the backside as well. And again, that could be wrapped into either project. It could be done in this one in anticipation.
I think we need to first wait till the warming hut is there and then figure out the best lay of the land once that goes. But when we get to that point, we should be known to add the connection.
The other option is tying this in to the already open-air pavilion there.
Yeah, we could do that.
So.
Yeah, because there's sidewalks. This looks like sidewalk from this drone shot, right? This is actual legitimate sidewalk. It's bathroom, and that's the pavilion that we do the slumber party in. Where was the hut going to go, in between them?
Do you see where I have it circled? Oh, the hut, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The southeast.
So, like, closer down the hill than what the current pavilion already is?
Yes, in front of the pavilion, facing the sledding hill.
I think it would be nice to run a sidewalk from that circle into that pavilion, that we're, the pavilion we already have, because then it connects to the sidewalk to the bathroom as well.
That could be part of the warming hut project, but I just, we just have to be mindful to kind of leave that part of whatever we're doing there is open.
Yeah, and we could, because that's not written into the grant for the DNR trust fund, we could put that as part of this grant, or not, I'm sorry, part of this project because you do have the open-air pavilion. That's not a wonder. I mean, it's there.
Right.
So, you could do that as part of this and tie that in.
Makes it a lot more ADA compliant, which I know is one of our big things.
It's just the next step in connectivity. So, I would say add it in to this to connect it to the open existing pavilion and then keep in the back of our minds for the future of that warming hut. See if we need to have two access points or not.
Well, right, didn't Wade Trim do the warming hut, too? Yeah, so.
Here's my thinking, is that, you know, if somebody's having a barbecue and all that, and, you know, they have, you know, somebody in a wheelchair there, and they're playing cornhole, and they want to go to and from, you know, rather than having to go all the way around the sidewalk and around, well, it might be level off in that area for them to get through. I don't know, but, you know, if we had something that, I'll use your word, intentional, that they knew that was a route to and from the pavilion and the game area, you know, I think we, you know, it'd be, it'd be worth looking at, I guess.
Might be better going to the open-air pavilion, too, because you're going to be doing the cornhole games in the summertime and not necessarily the winter and going to the, to the warming hut.
Good point, yeah, yeah. Are we hard, is it a hard thirty grand for Grace McDonald? I'm just wondering. Between the benches that we're going to order, that'll leave, like, twenty-two thousand for wood chips and all this, it seems like not nearly enough, right?
Well, I'd like to see what the quotes come in for wood chips, because I, you know, there might be shipping costs, and then you have to spread them and all that.
All right, like, ten, fifteen, twenty?
We can, we can do some things in both, I mean, the wood chips will all be at one time. So, you know, do you want them done and delivered this fall? Do you want to wait until the spring?
I think, honestly, personally, I think the sooner the better.
The sooner the better, okay.
Yeah, kids are just...
Yep.
Fly off those slides, you know?
Yep, that makes sense, so.
What does the winter do, do?
Probably nothing but make it better, because those kids are playing there even in the snow. But it's probably going to compact it even more.
It'll be fine on the wood chips.
They're not wood chips, though, right? They're not...
They're like a tumbled wood chip, so they go through this process to make them, like, soft. And there's a certain amount of buoyancy to it, so like, if a kid fell on it, they're going to sink him, like, you know, a certain amount of inches and pad it.
Is that sort of what...
If you Google search EWF and playground surface, it will pop right up what the criteria are. But it has to meet specific criteria to be EWF for the playground surfacing.
Are we pouring that over the existing wood chips?
Mm-hmm, yep, we always, we always do. That's what they anticipate you're going to do, and...
You're going to lose that, lose them every year, and the idea is to add, you know, enough to make up for that each year, so.
And this is just, we're just looking at Grace, what about Pine Grove?
No, we're doing Pine Grove, too, yeah. And if you recall, when we did Pine Grove last time, we added a border, right? So, it didn't have a border. We added one and then filled it up, and that was five thousand. So, it's not inexpensive, but you can take that down because of the border, right? And then add in Grace, so I'm thinking I would budget like ten thousand dollars into there.
Yeah, I think it'll probably be a little more cost-heavy this time around just because it's probably been a little bit of time since we've had wood chips in there. But then each year moving forward, you know, we wouldn't have to, you know, add so much into it. It wouldn't be that cost, you know, wouldn't be so costly.
And I think at this time, you're kind of looking at a way so that he can design this, and then if we look and get some quotes this fall and can get it done, we get it done. If it's something that needs to get held off until next year, we do it next spring. You know, I think either way, you need, you need Wade Trim to go through the process of laying out and kind of designing something so that we have something to show the contract workers.
And you do have just ten thousand in there under nine seventy-three, which was just a ten thousand dollar placeholder. And I don't have detail from last budget cycle on what that is, so it was probably just an additional ten for that. The thirty thousand was specifically for various improvements to athletic equipment and fields. Oh, I did have that detail, I'm sorry. It looks like on the, on the capital outlay. I'm sorry, the numbers have changed, that's right. But it was improvements based on the accessibility audit, and that was the ten grand in there. Now, number one, the accessibility audits didn't have a cost related to them. And with respect to those, I have talked with them about Dan, and I had talked with Bob about it, too. And those audits, they're going to be broken down into two things. One is really simple things that can be changed just like easily, right? But the other one is, we're going to have to take each park and be like, okay, there's these ten things we have to do and do a budget, almost like a project like we do on anything else. Because, so for example, when you say Grace McDonald, we need a sidewalk put here. Well, actually, what we need is probably a plan from a landscape architect with a series of sidewalks in there. And so, it's going to be an entire plan. It's not just as simple as, does that make sense?
Yeah, immediate needs and future needs, essentially.
Yeah, yep, yep. But I think, you know, and you are going to see, just in talking with the budget, on your attorney, engineer, and grant fees, they've been pretty low right through this year, but you are going to see in the next month, what went through payables in August, it's going to bump that up. Not insurmountable, but quite a bit because we had some issues with Beckett and Reader, and they were changing their process, I think, and we didn't, I didn't have some of the details. We had to go back and forth and get that. Finally got them all paid up. And so, thank you very much for everything.
I appreciate getting paid.
So, you'll see that bump up, and we also had some from the community garden as well, so. But it does not exhaust it, though, like, trust me, because I was like, gosh darn it, we're going to have to hit all of that, and it's just going to, and it didn't completely exhaust it, so.
So, do we want to take action on the cornhole? Do we want to say a general budget? Or do we want to push this off and just say we need to get Beckett and Reader to give us some sort of quote, and we need a woodchip quote?
Can we still move forward with the cornhole part and, you know, the sidewalk stuff, so?
No, for sure, but it sounds like you want to do, like, not just the minimal square of concrete, but like, do something a little bit around.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see this go, like, get extrapolated into some huge project. But I did hear comments last time about, like, well, it'd be nice to have a pavilion next to it. You know, I think you've got a pavilion there near it, and adding that concrete to it will help facilitate that. But I think what that was trying to get at, that comment, was a place to watch and a place to rest it. So, having them maybe design it with, like, maybe putting benches in a certain place, maybe some umbrellas someplace.
Exactly, because it's going to get hot.
It does get warm there. As a matter of fact, tomorrow morning, we ordered a shade. We'll probably have to get four of them total, but we started with one shade for the pickleball court. Yeah, and that is an accessibility issue as well, the shade, because there are some people who either have a condition or medications where they can't be in the sun, so.
Or they're just pure skin and right-headed.
Could be. So, with this, I mean, again, and what I would do is tell Scott, "Look, we have X number of dollars to work with on a plan, and we would like to see, you know, some benches and just, just enough to make it not like the cornhole, you know, capital of Midwestern America, but, you know, a nice place for a family to go and play or to have a tournament, you know, a general tournament." Tournament, it sounds like a very, you know, proper thing. It's not that bad. You just have to have enough board sets, enough distance to put the board sets in. You can bring them in. So, while me, we may only have two games, someone else could decide to organize the tournament and bring in two more sets, and as long as we have the footing there for them, that would work.
We did talk about doing, like, extra wide on the sides, so if people did bring your own, you just set them right next to our concrete ones, and you got four lanes going,
Yep.
which is probably enough to do something small.
Yep.
We should do the sidewalks from the cornhole to the open pavilion.
Yeah.
Get that done and why they're doing the cornhole.
Could we have Beckett and Reader give, like, option A of, like, minimal amount of concrete for essentially four lanes, but two permanent lanes?
When they, they like concrete. You want to...
Do it all?
Yeah.
Well, it might not be concrete. Sounds like you want a pavilion and pathways and benches on, like, the outer edges.
I'm thinking if we just put a couple benches at, like, some spots, then we would be fine. And there are benches where you can have the umbrellas or some type of shade sale or something like that. So, I'm just, I would be asking them to design a concrete pad that is large enough for a tournament, which is probably four games, and has some type of seating component, not huge, and I'm not talking bleachers, I'm talking a couple benches, and, because people can always bring chairs and add to it, and having some sort of a shade component to it, and then the concrete over to there.
We were also talking about replacing the crushed from the pickleball. That would go from the pickleball all the way down to the cornhole and then to the pavilion.
Yeah, so, yeah, would all, that would all go from crushed to sidewalk. Yeah, maintenance would love that because they wouldn't have to spray for all the weeds. The weeds do like to come straight up through that stuff, for sure, which is not a big deal. We can do that. But it is dusty dirty. Obviously, the concrete makes a big difference. Listen, when we put in the concrete and the paving, that made a huge difference to people. You, you saw a lot of comments on the parks with that.
So.
So, do we have a motion, though?
Yeah.
To add the sidewalks? We could probably add it from the pickleball to connect to the cornhole, then to connect to the pavilion.
So, instead of a construction budget specifically in mind, why don't we just set those parameters of that? And then the budget will come out of that, I mean, the budget estimate will come from that. But if you just authorize me to engage, you know, the Wade Trim's landscape architect for the design, you know, we can, we can go from there, and I will just tell him we'll keep it. Well, they're at six grand for the gens, and they may not be quite apples to apples, so you may, you don't have to give me an amount, but if we're getting above that four to five grand, I would be like, whoa, let's take that back.
I think his email even said this is a relatively small project, so I'm hoping it'll come in as less.
Yeah.
It seems a lot more straightforward and no, like, water permitting to worry about.
Yeah, definitely.
I can make a motion for this. All right, do we want to include the dollar amount or just, no?
You can do a not to exceed.
Okay. All right, I would like to make a motion to move forward with the Grace McDonald cornhole area, allowing up to four cornhole sets, two of, that are provided by East Bay Township, which would be the concrete, and also providing ADA accessible pathway along the parking lot to the tennis and pickleball courts and to the existing pavilion, and also including some benches and shade, either umbrellas or some kind of shade component to, to this.
Second that.
All right. Motion by Andrus, second by Reardon, for the Grace McDonald cornhole and ADA accessible pathways.
Just real quick, can we, quick discussion on, I wanted to ask about the, sorry, I'm kind of losing my train of thought.
Hey, can I ask you, what was the net to exceed? Was it six thousand, what'd you say?
We didn't.
Oh, I thought you were, okay.
That's what I was getting at.
Sorry.
I'm like, did I miss the number?
You got to put a dollar amount in there if that's what you're going for. I mean, we could just send, get the quote.
Seven thousand. I mean, that's going to come back if it's more than...
This is just for the planning part of it, right?
Yeah.
It's just for the planning, right, there'd be two numbers, one for the planning and then the rest for the actual project, the construction.
Yeah, goofed.
So, we probably safely saved five thousand dollars.
I think five, yeah.
All right.
All right.
No, no, you're fine.
I'll just, yeah.
About a motion to move forward, you know, including all the ideas that we have expressed, you know, here at the meeting, and, you know, instruct that to work with, was it Wade?
Wade Trim.
Wade Trim, to not see the five thousand dollar contract or work.
That gives me a lot of guidance to work with Wade Trim and Scott with, so that I can talk with him and be like, "Okay, here's what we're looking at," and if he's like, "Whoa, that's not nearly enough," or "That's way too much," it just gives me a good starting point with them.
That's just going to be the five thousand, just to get the design and...
Yeah. All right, and then I'll second.
I'm sorry, I kind of hijacked the motion. I mean, I guess it'd still be your motion, but you just accept the...
I accept Ryan's five thousand dollar limit to the motion made by Andrus and second by... by Reardon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Beth, sorry about that confusion, forgot the key component, alright. So, done with business before the Parks nine B, we got ahead and already completed business before the Parks Commission nine C, which was the new groundskeeper, so if there's nothing else to add there, we'll move on to business before the Parks Commission nine D, Parks and Rec, five-year plan action items.
Yeah, so I included in your packet, this is pulled right out of your existing five-year plan, so you didn't have to go track it down in there, what your action items were, and I know that there's been a lot that have been completed, but I didn't start even with a pen with it, this is, this is what it says, so we need to go through and take the items off that were already completed, and then look at what items you would like to add into the Park and Rec Plan to work on over the next five years. I did include in the packet your priority list, you worked on last year, to help you maybe come up with some ideas for projects, and ultimately, I would like to take these action items, whatever we come up with tonight, and then have an opportunity at the open house next month to have the public maybe prioritize or rank them for the, for the Parks Commission, so ultimately, in the end, you will know what's the best pri, you know, priority and what you need to move through fastest, but there may be some opportunity for the public to help guide that thought for what should come first or later on, on some of the, some of the topics, so, some of the items, so we have the action items for Grace McDonald, the pickleball court, that's already been done, or was there something additional that needed to be done with those? And the paving improvements, that was the parking lot, I'm assuming? So just the warming hut that's left there? The community garden, so I think we can update that to where we're at now, you know, we've worked through a lot of the design components and all of that, so now we're pretty much just to funding and building it, right? Arbuthis number five, that's under construction right now.
Yep.
Property acquisition, I think this is probably still a, an action item, just in general, for when it comes along, and then the trail study and site acquisition, that's some of what's already been working on that you saw tonight, I don't know if there's anything more specific that you want to add into that action item about that, or leave it kind of broad here.
It was kind of broad to begin with, because when we made the plan, the safe routes to school was in its infancy.
But with that, you know, we could maybe intertwine safe routes to school because the trail study would, would incorporate examining the feasibility of connecting all of the recreational parks and the surrounding population centers. So, as they had said, it's gonna go, th- this trail's gonna eventually go to four mile and then on up, because my goal is to have it hit past supply onto Hobbs Highway, that's been my dream for about thirty years. Ten years too, so, if we could maybe, I mean, what do you guys think, maybe incorporate the safe routes to school in with that trail study, site acquisitions, and keep it still connecting all the recreational parks and the surrounding population centers, yeah, because non-motorized trails are.
Well, we have eight priority projects, and we're rolling over trails, we're rolling over property.
Community garden.
We're rolling over.
Well, it's, it's in here, the warming hut's in our eight, the community garden is in our eight, so we're going from, we had five, we had six previous session, and we're looking at ten.
How do you figure ten?
Yeah.
Priority, priority projects, there's a.
Yeah, if you look at Park Commission Priority Projects, the list that we made last year, there's eight, and then we got a rollover land acquisition.
Well, the community garden is another rollover.
It's there.
It's in.
Yeah, if you're looking at the priority project memo, that's dated seven eleven twenty twenty-two.
Community garden's number three.
Couple more pages in Susan, it's past the old, the old five-year plan pages. Keep going.
Ryan, you said the DNR owns the four mile?
It's an email.
Yeah, right at the four mile?
One, couple more.
County owns it?
So Beth, I have a quick question about this, on the priority projects from last year, there's the Arbuthis Lake number five, phase two, is that what's happening now, or is that another component to Arbuthis?
That is another component.
Okay.
Phase two was, there's an interior area where there's already existing tables and benches, and so there could be updated tables in there, and those could also be ADA, along with some, an increased, you know, walkway.
Okay.
Not a huge amount of pathway by any means, but right now, you're going to be able to get from the parking lot to the fishing pier and the kayak launch will be accessible.
And the bathrooms?
Parking lot to the bathrooms is accessible, so that means the fishing pier and the kayak launch are accessible by going through the parking lot, but what the future phase might be is to then cut across through there in the least intensive way of allowing that direct instead of going through a parking lot, and so that, and then improving the tables, which is not very expensive, and then also part of the next phase was improving the play structure over there, because there's just some older play equipment there, and that's not too big of a deal either, and I think that you'll find it kind of interesting, because it's a limited scope, you can get creative with some of the different materials that you can use there for kids, like, they have some that are focused on, not that you would do this, but like dinosaurs, or they have some that are focused, that look like trees and tree stumps, you know?
I think for tonight, we want to decide our action items, our priorities.
And I think, if I could just interject one more thing, with the, what Claire and Elizabeth were definitely wanting to kind of introduce to you was the idea of doing the twenty twenty-four DNR cycle, to have trail related, to try to build that capacity, and I, I said that would be important for you guys to think about, because obviously, if you do one, then we don't do a different, you can put in more than one, it's just you're competing against yourself at that point, so, but that's definitely, and I don't think Elizabeth mentioned, but just so you know, they've, they have, I've been impressed with their ability at the onset of the engineering, they did get a grant, federal grant, for about nine hundred thousand towards the engineering and so forth that they'll be using, and they had a personal donation of, I believe it was four hundred and fifty thousand, that were, that's the donation we're using right now on the engineering and design, so that's, while it's an expensive trail, that's a nice start to it, and has helped a lot in the past year, so really thankful for that, but just wanted to mention that about the DNR trust fund.
Thank you, Beth. Alright, so looking at our Parks Commission Priority Projects from last year, I think we already got a really good start here, and adding the two rollover items to it would increase the projects and maybe change the priority levels, but the township five-year Park and Rec Plan update, I mean, we're currently working on that this year, so there would be nine items, in my opinion, to that priority project list, if we, because we're currently working on number eight, you know?
Right, does it need to be higher?
It doesn't, yeah, it's not a.
The only additional item, well, maybe not the only one, but that I can think of would be Holiday Woodlands, because that wasn't in our old plan, and it, we just recently acquired it, so we're working through visioning, you know, the next step would be master planning that property and moving forward with development of that property, so I.
Yeah, we'll definitely want a section of that in our master plan, especially if we ended up being kind of like the spearhead for trying to fund a lot of the projects for.
And I think, I mean, we still have the opportunity, we wouldn't be ready for this next round anyways, but maybe the following year to go after a trust fund development grant for a component of that, to continue that momentum off that grant funding from acquiring the property, so I would add on a Holiday Woodlands component to that, and then anything, and you don't have to, you know, tonight is kind of a, throw your ideas out there, and then we can always whittle the list down to see what you think you can work on over the next, you know, five years, and so I would encourage you to think broadly about anything you'd like to see potentially in the plan.
Oh yeah, we just need a list, and then hopefully get something for the next month, the open house, and hopefully we get some public input, and that might help rank those levels per what the public wants to see.
I have a question. The Hammond Park, the idea about the, up on five milli Hammond, is that still a project that we're interested in at all, or is that kind of like?
Yeah, it's, it's the water tower property.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping to.
That's number four.
Start, start developing and planning that property as it's just vacant, minus the water tower, so, Beth, you had something to add?
I did, real quick, I just wanted to mention to you, one thing at Grace McDonald, is we've done quite a bit at Grace McDonald, and with the warming hut, and this other project you talked about earlier, it seems like a lot is completed there, but one thing I'd have you think about is the soccer fields, so we've really been looking at those soccer fields, and the rutting in them is, is, you can't really have kids playing soccer or football out there, because they will have twisted everything, so I did find there is a company that specializes in the restoration of fields specifically, so as you can imagine, that is probably leveling it out, reseating, all, all of this stuff, so that's an option, there is an option too, if you don't feel like it's being best utilized as a soccer field, what else might you turn it into, so, those are some things that I just wanted you to think about that, because that's one part of Grace that's not finished, so to speak.
Well, that's what we asked for, we asked for.
That we would walk over there and.
Making it an all-purpose field.
Under our maintenance, under our maintenance.
Might be able to, if it doesn't affect the irrigation, bring a steamroller and to flatten that, we've had to do this at the Civic Center before, for like, presidential rallies that come in and stuff, they have all the different trucks that drive on the fields and ruin them, and then they have to fix them.
You said you looked into that?
So it's definitely, I was just finding a vendor that, that did that, because that is beyond the scope of what, say, Dan would do, you would need a contractor to do that, and so with that, you're talking about, it's a project, and I'm not saying it's an insurmountable project, but it is more than what we would do in-house with a groundskeeper.
I don't think it's necessarily a priority, but I think I forget about it, and I think a lot of people do, Pines Park, just keep that in mind if we ever want to put something somewhere, that's something we already own, but I'm pretty sure there's no development, right, it's just land we own.
I will say, I feel very overwhelmed, I've been on this board for all about six or seven years, and we get a lot done, but we're just, we're dreaming and we're dreaming and we're dreaming, and then all of a sudden, all the things that we dreamed about seven years ago, we've forgotten about.
I don't think we've forgotten about, they're still on our list.
They're still on our list.
No, no priorities come up.
We, we do get things done.
We do, I'm not, I mean, this is.
Pines Park next to the community garden, keep getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back, so, the Pines, I mean, we haven't really had any great discussion on that area, but it is important.
Again, I don't think it's a priority, I just think, keep that in mind. Oh, we own all the land.
It's still in our plan, it's listing, but it's still undeveloped at this time.
I need to go check it out.
And conceptually undeveloped at this time.
Well, we just put in a grant for the community garden, right?
Um, we don't have anything that's active for right now.
We didn't get the eight hundred thousand.
The Spark Grant?
Spark, right?
Right.
But, oh yeah, yeah, and that one hasn't, we haven't got an answer for it yet.
Right, but we just, you just did it in the end of July, right?
Four hundred and fifty applicants, just to let you know.
I know, I understand.
And we should know in September, so.
Okay, and we're waiting a trust fund for the warming hut?
I just went up to Sue St. Marie to deliver public comment on the city's acquisition of the Brown Bridge Quiet Area, and on the warming hut, so. Like I said, I drove over the bridge for y'all.
Appreciate it.
Um, there was other, you were mentioning the Spark Grant. Oh, thank you, yes, Pines Park, there is actually a plan for Pines Park, we can dig it up somewhere, but they did a long time ago do plans for a Pines Park, now whether they're still relevant, you know, I don't know.
I think there were tennis courts in there.
I, yeah, I thought I remembered some fields or something.
That'd be cool to see.
One of the, we can dig them, we'll dig them out, between Susan and I, we'll dig them out, Sarah, I was wondering, there's a lot of planning grants that are coming out right now, but I don't know that they would be for that in particular, but I was wondering, like, you know, property like that.
Yeah.
Would there be some planning, and, you know, here's another thought too, I don't,
do you recall how many acres that is?
Is that at least twenty?
It'd be in our, in our record.
You're talking about Pines, right?
It already sounded right in my head, but I had nothing to back that up.
And it butts up against, isn't there a conservation district coming in on the south end?
I don't know if the property touches it or not, but that's an interesting, it's nearby.
It's off of Arbuthis, yeah, and it butts up right to the Pines, what I think it is by that dirt road.
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm not saying you should do this, but something to think about, there is a lot of funding for the planning of this, and I say this really just kind of putting it out there, not knowing, like, if that was a DNR trust fund grant that we got Pines Park with or not, I'm not sure, we'd have to do some, we'd really have to do some research, but with that much acreage, is it a possibility to look at, what, huh, thirty acre?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Yeah.
With eighty acres?
Go to our website.
Would it be possible to work with a housing association to do some type of single-family or multiple-family dwellings out there with parks integrated, so, do you know what I'm saying, and that probably would hit some of that planning, because housing is such a, a hot issue.
How would you do that, you would sell some off to housing units?
Not necessarily, there's, you know, I'd really want to get. No, we wouldn't want to own or operate the housing, but what we could potentially do, and I really, I almost hate broaching this, because I, it's, you know, this is just, this was just a thought, but what we could do to see if there's any potential, is we could talk with some of those directors of some of the housing agencies, so there's, what's the one that?
There's Homestretch, is the big one.
That's the one I was thinking of, and what Homestretch does, is it comes in and it puts up, you know, housing, and it does it for a rate that is affordable, for this, they are more missing middle, so they're not, they're not, they're not like.
Like seventy percent?
The housing, yeah, it's, it's missing middle, and what they do then is they take the, the slim margin that they have and put that into more housing, so that's how they're able to do that, but if you think about it, and like I said, I'm not proposing this necessarily, this is up to you guys and the township board, but eighty acres is enough to integrate and help with some housing shortage and really. and really integrate parks. There's just a study that came out. I just forwarded it to a colleague that talked about, you know, the importance of the green spaces and living next to parks and green spaces. Actually, they showed statistically affected, affected the longevity of your life. So now there's lots of research that'll go on after that too. But anyway, just something to think about.
That's awesome idea.
According to our website, it is eighty acres. The site plan was only for twenty of those acres, but the plans include a baseball field, football field, tennis court, skating rink, paved walking trails and a playground and picnic area. So that's a lot just in the twenty acres and still leaving sixty for whatever you might want.
But it's also at the end of a road. It's dirt and there's pike homes into there. And so the solitude is kind of nice too. And Beth was just talking about.
Isn't that new, isn't that new subdivision going out there, like on your side of that?
There's a un- un- Russian Garfield right there. And I mean, honestly, I'm thinking three mile Garfield, that's actually a really good spot to get people in and out of town to work.
The one that O'Grady's doing, isn't it, right?
It's, um.
It's in the.
It's off Three Mile.
Of the.
Yes.
Four mile, uh, four hundred and three mile.
I thought it was north.
Right. But doesn't it, but doesn't it back up, doesn't it back up to the pines? Ish? No?
It's north of that road to go to the pines.
Okay.
Yes, north.
Just stay there.
If you were, if you were, if you were even slightly, like, what would that mean? I could have, Claire is very well-versed in missing middle housing and we could also get Yaro Brown to speak with you guys or the director of Homestretch to visit with you to see what are those possibilities and what does that look like? You're exactly right, Susan. I think if you were to go down this road and obviously this would take the township board and you would need them hand in hand with you in doing that. But you wouldn't want to, obviously every development impacts somebody, right? So you cannot develop a piece of property and not, not impact somebody next to you. Cause I know lots of times they'll say, well, there is impact next to me. Well, there's going to be on pretty much anything. But you don't want to.
There must be laws for that.
But you don't want a huge, you know, you don't want a negative impact. And so we could visit with them and see what was possible, what design might be possible, those types of things. But that's something you would want to involve. You could get staff or some experts to come in and give you some information. You can involve the township board, you can involve, and you should, involve the public. You know, all of those things. I, I am not, let me just be really clear, I'm not pushing this or, or pulling it, but eighty acres is a lot and housing is on everybody's mind and as well as living with parks and near parks.
And green space. Cause Traverse City's losing more and more every day. So, and green space. So just because you have it doesn't mean you gotta develop it. But maybe we could at the open house say, hey, did you know that we have a Pines Park and list the description, eighty acres? What's your suggestions to utilize that property? See what we get.
Yeah. Well, I think that's a good one. I mean, that's one of those examples where you've talked about it in the past. It kind of keeps getting overlooked. Other things bubble up to the top and get some input on it. And we can create an action item list where you have, these are the top five. We're gonna focus on these and here's other things if we have time we want to work on, right? Or to make sure they get carried over to the next park and rec plan in five years. Or if some financing opportunity comes along and you could say, well, it isn't our park and rec plan, you know, let's, let's move forward with that, for that. So I'll add Pines Park planning onto that. And I sent an email to you, Beth, about the old plan to dig out for us. So.
I had curiosity about Kelly Park.
Oh, they call it Kelly Park.
What's Kelly Park? It's a boat launch on.
Chandler.
Chandler Lake.
Oh Chandler? This, it's an easement, right?
It's an easement. But I mean, is it a designated trail going down to the lake?
So we, we have a parcel there that we use for our buildings and grounds. We have two buildings there that house our truck and our equipment. And then it just goes to access that road, across the road, across the little cul-de-sac there at the end is an easement that goes down to Chandler Lake. So it is an easement. So there are neighbors. So we try to be respectful of those neighbors, but we do try to make sure that.
Really something to look at though.
Well, as far as doing what?
Is there, I mean, it just was listed in, in the last plan, wasn't it?
So if you were to take and do something with Kelly Park, which is, we really talk about that more is where the outbuildings are. We would have to look at where we're gonna put our outbuildings. So if we were, would it be possible to develop that as a park? Yes, but we'd have to bring maybe an outbuilding out here to house what we need. And then that, what's on site there could be altered to do what you would want to do on that site.
I was just curious if, if it would make sense to have, you know, if somebody wanted to put in there, but.
They can put in there.
Okay. I, I don't know what it looks.
I mean, it is the boat launch to Chandler Lake. Like.
It's a dirt road that goes there.
Can you take motorized boats on it?
Yeah.
There's still no wake.
Yeah, I don't think it's a, no, I don't think it's a wake lake.
Fishing boats probably.
Yeah. But I think it is the only access to Chandler Lake for boats.
I'll go check that one out too.
I think you're right. You would know better. You are the ultimate fisherman, so you would know better than me.
It's been a while, but yeah.
Like how, how, did we always own it or did we acquire it sometime?
I, it's been there as long as I've known, the easement.
Cause if it's the only access to Chandler Lake, I mean, maybe it's something that.
Well, it is an easement, so we wouldn't be able to develop that, so to speak. But we do keep it in good repair as far as the ground is, the, the stone that's there. Try to keep it so that people can get down and launch there. I think the only opportunity for park development there, so to speak, is really that area that has the, the buildings. And that for a development, I mean, you could put a trail through there, you could put some campgrounds there.
Yeah, I was just curious what it was I, I heard recently.
More of, yeah, more property that's called a park, but it houses all the equipment.
I don't know why they call it a park.
It houses all of our park maintaining equipment. So.
So we did make this priority project because of the Spark Grant. We were like, okay, if we can start applying for the Spark Grant, what are some things that we, we would like to do? And that's where this list came from. So if we look at it again, are we still, are these still our priorities? Cause that's why the parks plan was on there. To get some help building that.
Yeah, yeah. We don't have to put them in any order tonight, but.
Well, number one could just be a philosophy of if we were gonna do a project, we just implement it.
Yeah.
Make sure it's ADA and all that.
Yeah, but we want to make those changes.
Yeah, which it's a priority for any project that we do is to incorporate that as number one priority for any project is to update the ADA. Warming Hut, we're already pretty well underway for that. Just need some funding. Community Garden, we're pretty well underway with all that. Same thing, just need some funding. Hammond Park, we just had vision, you know, we need some help with planning and design to see what's even viable options for there. Trail maps, markers, signs, I mean.
Did we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. I mean, I mean, that's an important thing we've been talking about for a few years now. The Arbuthis Lake Number Five Phase Two. I mean, I see that hopefully within five years, we can finish Arbuthis Lake Five off with Phase Two. Not gonna be a huge project, hopefully. Killings Work Park Bathroom, been talking about that for some time. Probably won't be a super big project, just need to get something in the works. Holiday Woodlands, I mean, we just acquired that property, which it's a huge property for us to get. So I'd say that should be high priority to get that, you know, up to what it should be or could be. Pines Park, I mean, that's property that definitely should keep on the priority of doing something with.
As opposed to trying to rank them tonight, could we postpone until the open house? Hopefully get community.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And maybe also do a survey where they can rank them.
Yeah, and I'll be able to put them all into one document. Like tonight, I was just hoping for you to provide me with additional information that we can put on there and then we'll go through and cut and trim and shape after open house.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have a pretty good list here that we can focus on, get some public input on, and then go from there and rank them to what we actually want to do. But I'd say at least the top three are currently active, high priorities and already underway, so.
Other than just like input at the open house, will we have any sort of formal like needs assessment that the community can participate in or provide responses on? That would maybe help guide us because I mean, you did mention this is a lot of projects. It does seem like all of them are priority, but what is the community? Is there any sort of like formal, can we do that? Is that within our scope?
Right. Well, that's, I mean, part of the process at the open house would be to basically put all the projects on a board and say, here's your dots and you tell us, you know, kind of to rank them and whoever, whichever project has the most.
Do we have a way to communicate with the folks that don't come to the open house as well? That so that they can also participate in that feedback?
Uh, we can. We didn't talk about it. We had a survey at the beginning of the, of the process. So that survey's come back and it's kind of items that might be missing out of park and things like that. I mean, we could do some sort of, you know, have a survey open where people could rank them, you know, later on as an option as well.
I think that would help kind of like guide the priorities and says a lot and.
We've done QR codes like at the signs at all the parks before. I thought that was a good move. Cause that's like people are actually using it. Like, what would you like to see at this park? Scan it and tell us.
Right.
I mean, how many participants we have last time? Under a hundred?
It's hard to.
Yeah, under a hundred. The issue we're gonna run into is we do need to, and I'm happy to go forward with the survey. The survey afterwards, if you wanted to do something like that, would have to be pretty quick because we need to get this turned around to get it out for public review so we can get it done to be submitted.
And we keep always getting, asking for comments from the public and we get, you know, like a hundred or less.
Well, that last one was really long too. I think that's the biggest issue is like, I'll click on the link, but then two, three minutes in, I'm like, okay. And you're not telling me how many more of these? I'm gonna go back to my other email. I know that's what happens all the time.
Kind of a little reward system.
Or at least tell me how many slides do I have left here?
We could put, let's, let's see what the turnout is. We have a meeting right following our open house where we can debrief about it and we can decide if you feel like you want to try to get some additional input and maybe we could do a quick survey that's only open for a couple of weeks to help add some more input onto that.
What if we just, you know, kept it as simple as, you know, you have the, the projects that we chose, let's say there's eight of them or whatever. And then you, you just have big pieces of paper on the wall and people could write what they like about it and what they don't like about it. And then, you know, that should be able to translate into a form pretty easily where if people wanted to contribute, you know, that couldn't make the meeting. They could have, you know, a link on the website that they could click to and contribute, you know, up to a certain date or something.
Right. Yeah.
I don't know if we can unnecessary stuff, but I don't know, especially since we're, unless, was the last survey in preparation for the renewed five-year plan?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, yeah, I guess it did already happen.
Very good. It's your first day.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we try to engage the public and, you know, we have it out there, but we do struggle with getting large quantities of responses back. So I think we do our best to envision, provide everything for the residents.
That's really why we're elected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To, you know, know what the public is asking and wanting and try to engage them as much as possible.
I mean, I talk to people around and get their thoughts and opinions and, I mean, that helps drive, you know, my thinking. And I mean, you talk to ten people, they talk to ten more, like, it's probably the word of mouth is the best way. So.
Okay. Well, I think I have enough for this for right now and then we'll, like I said, we'll debrief after the open house and come up with our next steps following that at the next meeting.
All right.
Budget time?
Yeah, all right.
Sarah, can I be extended?
Yeah.
I can't, I gotta go.
No. Yeah. Do what you gotta do.
The twenty-three projected and twenty-four requested, they're all zeroed out, but it's got year-to-date twenty-three data and stuff from last year, I guess. Beth, what are we supposed to do as this budget item? Like actual due twenty-twenty-four official request right now?
So I included the information from the previous year's budget so that you could see the footnotes for those to see what was included in this year. Those are on pages fifteen and sixteen. And then on page seventeen, this is what your budget form looks like. Like if you were a department, this is what you would get. It gives you your twenty-twenty-two activity through the whole twelve months. What was originally budgeted this year, any amendments that have taken place this year, your amount through the day that it says. And then what you fill in is your projected and your requested. So I just kind of highlighted that for you on the next page eighteen so that it was a little larger, so you didn't need your glasses.
Oh, I see.
But it's the same information. And most of these, I can, on the projected, I can go through and determine that for you just based like, I can get you very, very close on say, for example, like your board meetings, your additional meetings, you know, payroll expenses, those types of things. And obviously your attorney engineer grant fees, I can estimate that, especially once we just updated that, as I was telling you in, in August with some payables.
Some big, big checks went out. Remind me the fiscal year time period? Does that end in December?
We run calendar year. So what I was hoping today was that maybe you would just have some generalized discussion on twenty-twenty-four and then we can bring this back to you. Based on your discussion, I could just put together some draft numbers and then bring it back to you at the September meeting and you could, you know, go from there. Just gives you something to bounce off of. I'd like to try to have something that I would take and input into the rest of the general fund after that September meeting. Yeah. And one thing to remember too, budgets are important. They're legally required actually for townships. But one thing to remember is, is it is a little bit different than like a private business, right? So private business, you budget and it's very much, I mean, you've got to, what are you gonna sell? What, how are you gonna match those revenues, right, with your expenses and that sort of thing? And we do that as well. Not what we sell, obviously, but with our tax base, right? The biggest place that, for our general fund, well, there are several places, the two biggest places that we have revenues are our property taxes. I think we're at point six, point seven mils, right around there. And then the other is the, the funding from the state, your local revenue sharing from the state. So with those two, the, the purpose of the budget officially for a township is the authority to spend, the legal authority to spend. So what you're really doing is saying, okay, you know, that, that you have this ability to spend this amount in this line item. So as things change, you can change and that's why you have, that's why amended budgets are watched and utilized, yeah, generally with all organizations, the budget, but particular with our, with our local governments, you know, we will do any amendments based on that. So easily we'll take a look and I, as I mentioned, the projected numbers, I can get you pretty close on most of those. I can also do the twenty-twenty-four projected on like your board meeting fees and your payroll expenses. Because what I'll do is I'll take an anticipated COLA, which is available. And we don't determine wages until December when we know what COLA is gonna be from the Social Security Administration. and we don't determine wages until December, when we know what COLA's gonna be, from the Social Security Administration. And then we typically, the township board not required to, but passed historically has set according to that, just for the change in the value of the dollar and keeping people where they were at the previous year. So it's been zero some years, it's been 7.9, I think, one year, so.
Just recently.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, I'll get an estimate of that, and they do have some estimates out already. So I can get you pretty close on those numbers. What you'd really want to do is that engineering, attorney and grant fees, you'd really want to take a look at that, and then maybe what your actual projects will be next year.
I have a quick question about the property acquisition line item. So we mentioned, we mentioned that, that money rolls over, so does it go into a restricted fund?
So, um, it's been 25,000 in there, and.
Or is that just we?
It looks like it says there's 106,000 if I'm reading that.
We put 25,000 in every year.
For five years, you've been doing that?
If we don't use it, just the balance will go in.
Yes, but we haven't adjusted those fund balances yet, and we'll be doing that. We just put out an RFQ for a capital improvement plan, and with part of that capital improvement, and it was, we're looking at what to spend on capital, we'll be looking at those fund balances as well. But what you have right now, which hasn't been adjusted based on the Holiday Woodlands Natural Area purchase, let me find the line item.
970 dot zero zero zero, I think.
Oh, wait, I, well, no, 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 I'm talking about the amount in fund balance that would have.
Oh, sorry.
That would have built up. Oh, here it is. 69,824 dollars is in there right now.
That's in the acquisition fund?
Mm-hmm. It's in the fund balance.
We had to cover holiday.
So is that what that 105 is in 2022? Is that our Holiday Woodlands Preserve purchase?
Which page are you looking at?
I'm looking at your 17 out of 18, your blue and white one. I just saw, I just learned about this, because that's when I asked if we could transfer that 25, but then Susan said you're booking it every year. So when I saw that, I thought maybe 2022, that was the year-to-date balance, was that 105?
That was, and now.
And then we've spent 30 or 40.
That was, the 105 was more than we actually had to pay. So with the DNR trust fund acquisition, you have to, we did it as an esc, um, gosh, I'm trying to think of what they call it. It was, I wanted to call it an escrow closing, but anyway, the point is, what they do is they forward the money less 10%. And we cover that 10%, and then it comes back to us. And so we did that last year, and to cover our portion plus that 10% was 105, 5.90 and 50 cents. And then this year, not in 2022, but in the spring of 2023, we reseeded in that 10% amount. So it actually wouldn't be, like, if somebody said historically, what have you spent on property acquisition? It would be less than the 105, 5.90. I think it would probably be about, rough numbers, 65,000 or something like that, rough numbers.
So one of the items that, I know I'm not the Parks Commission, but.
No, we appreciate you.
Yeah. Was the supply line item. We had 500, and we've already spent the 376 this year. But I'm thinking next year, we have some, we talked about maybe 500 towards geocash, just in general for supplies for that. And I also would like to get a banner for the sledding party. That would be kind of a standing banner to put out at Grace McDonald for that. And so I don't know if we could increase that amount more, you know, to either 1,000 dollars or 1,500 dollars, just in supplies. I know that, you know, here and there and whatever, but just looking at how close that number is for us for this year, and we didn't do anything too extravagant, but looking forward.
Should we budget for some supplies for the, the ground caretaker?
I think he comes out of a different line item, or a different budget.
A different department, yeah.
Are we getting anything for the little library?
Um, I usually just run that through his supply, unless you're doing some specific, like, if you were going to say, we're going to update and replace all of them, then I would say, okay, let's have a line item in here, and we'll do that. But, you know, right now, it's like the glass broke, so Bob replaced it with all plexi glass. You know, we just put it in there, I, you know, that she needed.
Maybe doing a small gas stipend or something for her, because she's not, we're not paying her at all, right? She's 100% volunteer.
She's a volunteer, yeah.
Just something to get her from driving all the way around to all the parks and checking on them. I would be open to that. I'm not saying it has to be done.
I guess Susan was excused, but she gave me her thoughts for this, so I'd like to at least, since she's not here, go over what she wrote down for these line items. So for 2024 is how I read this, she was okay with the board meeting fees for the additional slash special meetings. It looks like she. Oh, there's a down arrow. I think she wanted to decrease it by 2,000, so I.
Doesn't have any special meetings?
How I read it, I, yeah, she had like 1,000, and then crossed out, and there's a down arrow, so I'd assume she wanted to. Yeah, I mean.
We'll be able to get her.
Do you think we're thinking that, like, with the amount spent so far, we'd probably only spend about 1,000, so cut it, yeah? That's how I'm interpreting this graph.
Yeah, and that's, that's usually how I go through budgeting. I, I do every budget from the ground up. I rarely go on some line items from the previous year, but I like to make sure that I'm, and so that's why, for example, your supplies were at 500 this year, because it had showed for several years that it was lower. Can you change that? You bet. And I think that those are good reasons, too. And this is very similar. I would agree with Susan in that if you're showing about 700 or 800, then really you could change that to 1,000. But I would ask you to think about one thing. I think that that 824 was just one additional meeting.
That was when we went to all the parks for the ADA?
Oh, so I have to see how they pay that. But I would say, I think it would be good in 2024 to have a joint meeting with the Township Board as well. So when, when I go to look at those board meeting fees for you, I would definitely factor in the touring meeting and then one joint board meeting, if you guys are good with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should accommodate for at least two special meetings, so.
Also okay with the supply increase?
Yeah, what she stated with an up arrow, 2,000, and then wrote, renew sign it. So I think she would like to, definitely agrees with increasing that supply budget, which I think we can all agree on that one. She wrote 25K for parkland acquisitions, so I think she would like to continue with doing the 25,000 a year. Legal expense slash attorney, up arrow 1,000, and then wrote 42,000 there. So I think she wants to maybe up that a little bit.
For engineering? That'd be the same as this year. We went down to 42. I would almost say go up.
Yeah, so.
Well, in order to do that, we have to kind of hold in on which project we're gonna do.
But either way, we're still using these guys almost on all of our projects to do all the design work.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look and see what we, I didn't figure out how much it costs per meeting or anything like that. We had 12,000.
I think we lowered it for 23, because we knew in 23 that a lot of that work would already be done, and we would be working on the.
Yeah, this had 12,000 for staffing, 10 for the park and rec update, and 20 for community garden work for last year. But that is, you know, we have to kind of figure out what projects you're moving forward with. I guess you've got gens you're already gonna have engineered, but you won't need construction oversight for that.
Go on, Hall.
The three mile, is that TART trail, if they're going for a DNR grant? Are we gonna have to cover any of the attorney fees or anything like that?
Yeah, when the TART's writing those grants, do they, does the township pays?
The township would, typically what they would like to see is like a 50% match. Now, they went up to 400,000 this year. Their previous maximum max was 300,000. So that would mean a $400,000 match from the township. It could be 200,000. You could go in with a 25%. It just helps you in your scoring. So what we did one year is when we were going to go for the grant, we budgeted it in, and we didn't end up using it that year. And on top of that, the year you go in for is not the year you use the money. So if you're gonna go in in 2024, you won't use that money until 2025, because remember, they don't make the decision until December of that year, and the governor still has to sign it. So you're looking at the spring before that's done. So they can still put in for the DNR grant at 800 or 600, whatever, and then we can work towards that funding from there.
But to apply for those grants is charging anything to the township to write those grants to the MDNR and?
No, that would be, I miss, I am very, I'm, I haven't confirmed that exact question, but I would be really shocked, because we do have that funding for the engineering. We anticipated that engineering was gonna be more about 300,000, and we'd got a very competitive price from OHM that I think was about 150, 160. So they should have funding to, to do that. And usually, if they expect us to pay for it, they'll run it through us, so, just as we did with the engineering, that contract with OHM is with the township, and then we have a contract with TART that says they'll repay us for the exact amount of that contract.
There's one more thing on Susan's notes here. For the Holiday Woodlands Natural Area, question mark 10K for the maintenance contract. She wrote due 5,000, you know, so I think, you know.
Are we actually, this is our first year with that maintenance fee, right?
Well, they've been maintaining it. We haven't, we haven't paid them, yet they haven't billed us, invoiced us. So I would expect that to be more formalized coming up, so I would anticipate, and I don't think it's a bad idea, keeping that in the budget for that reason. And the other thing is, as we finish up that visioning, we'll start to go towards really the planning, based on that visioning. And so that would be happening during 2024. And while there are planning grants out there, they're fewer and further between and hard to get, so. Not a bad idea to plan that visioning part for, I'm sorry, not the visioning, the.
Engineering.
The plan development, like a, yeah.
Like a park master plan.
Exactly.
How much do those normally cost?
Park master plan?
Yeah.
More than 10,000.
Right, yeah.
Like 40, maybe?
I don't think it would be that much. I really don't.
Just depends the extent.
Depends who you hire.
Well, Sarah and Claire would be great ones to ask, because they've worked on these before. Do, do you?
That's if it was subcontracted out entirely, about 40. Like, if we have staff working on it in conjunction.
Right. I mean, we're doing the vision, the visioning process of it, so that's kind of one chunk out of it for that. But then to develop the actual master plan, and you'll probably have to have a little bit more public input on that, too. I think being that it's a natural area, I just don't see a ton of, like, the planning and design of it, which would be too extensive.
Trails, bathroom, parking lot.
Right.
Some water, some lock tricks.
It's on Highland, too, so it's not like, yeah, they have a whole lot of board law.
Do you think the most expensive part would be the landscape architect and doing some?
Renderings, probably. Yeah.
For the master plan.
Yeah. Let me ask Tim about it and see what he thinks, just based on the size.
But that, the visioning is gonna potentially go through, like, three choices.
Yeah.
We'll eventually do it down.
Yep.
Any kind of planning with, for like a parking lot, like an official parking lot kind of thing?
I would imagine.
Drainage and stuff like that, that'd probably take some planning.
Well, and I mean, I guess that's some design work. So we've got, we're doing the visioning, and then we're gonna kind of do an overall park kind of concept, master planning, maybe phasing of what that looks like, and then you would get into the design for each phase, and then the funding to actually do the construction for each phase.
And I did want to mention to you, too, twice, I've had DNR personnel mention to me on Holiday Woodlands Natural Area to definitely consider coming back for another DNR trust fund grant for the development of that, because I've made them aware, hey, you guys, you know, graciously funded us for the acquisition, and just wanted to let you know that we have rotary funding for 10,000 and in-house staff to do some visioning, to get everybody on the same page, and then we want to do a master plan after that. And they're like, that's fantastic. Once you get that done, and you have the idea of what that master plan will produce, consider coming back, because they said they really like to see the development grants follow some of those acquisition funds. They like to be part of what they created.
Start to finish kind of deal.
Yeah, so, and so that wouldn't be a 2024 grant. That would probably be like a 2025 grant.
So if we go for the TART trust fund grant, probably should just do like that one, and like you said, don't do it. Plan on doing any other applications for anything else?
I mean, we could start to take a look at some of the other DNR grants, because they have the passport. They also have the matching one that's out, that they've been doing, the land and water. I can't remember the names of all of them.
I feel like there's a Trails grant that came out not too long ago. It's a federal grant somewhere, but I'll look into it. I tried to find it, couldn't find it.
So I was looking at Holiday Woodlands, and then you would look, probably the next big one would be Gens Park, because that, ideally, we would be doing construction next year for whatever that comes back at. So we kind of have some estimates based on what Brian had thought from the last meeting that you could plug into the worksheet for us for Gens. There's two Gens Park Capital Outlay in this sheet. They're just in different orders, the words. And then the Grace McDonald, that did not include the match, right, to, if we got the trust fund, because that was gonna be another year out.
Exactly.
When we did that. So I'm wondering how we should budget that this year, if we should anticipate getting that grant this time?
That's what I was starting to say earlier, and then I don't know, I got sidetracked. But in one time, we planned it and put it in, and then something happened, and that didn't work, or it got pushed to the next year. I can't remember, and I was, I remember at that time thinking to myself, we're not gonna do that anymore. We're going to, we're gonna go ahead, like, operational and maybe some projects that we know. But those really large grants that you're looking to match, like a community garden, or like a, a DNR trust fund that would, could be 300, 400,000 dollars, go after it. And then if you're getting a good scoring, and you know going into December that, you know, you're sitting pretty good going into that meeting, well, then start to look at it for the next year's budget, or wait until you hear in December, if you're just one of those lucky ones in December that you're hanging out in the bottom of the list and they pull you, then just, just amend your budget.
Okay, okay. So, and then I know that, we talked about this a couple of times, so I'm gonna be Susan's advocate for this. She's wanted a community garden line item, and it was always when we restructure the numbers, we would add one in there. I don't know if one of those capital outlays is a community garden, can be a community garden one or whatnot. I mean, I guess at this time, the Parks Commission would have to decide if there's something you wanted to move forward on that project, or if you're just kind of holding it for grants, or if maybe you wanna budget some to, as a match or something for community garden to put in there. So we don't have it called out in any one specific spot, but do you want to start working towards that project in construction?
Is there a, a line item for grant matches?
There was grant distribution.
Well, once the community garden starts, we're gonna have fees. So we should probably have a line item, because we're gonna use those fees for maintenance items and, and.
Supplies?
Yeah, like for a, like a supervisor or a.
Yeah, like, for a, like a supervisor or a, a parks liaison, a small stipend for that individual.
Do you have revenue and expense line items?
So we would probably, we would probably, we could look at doing this a couple of different ways. And, you know, help, uh, glad to have your suggestions, but we have personnel right now. We have personnel in Department seven seventy. And so we could add that personnel, and, which is our buildings and grounds. We could add that personnel in seven seventy, and the revenue is just gonna go in our general revenue, um, fund. Although, I will say, would we end up doing that in a special fund because of those revenues? I don't know. I think your expenses are definitely gonna be more than the revenues you bring in.
I don't think it really matters to try to balance it. The, the revenues are a nominal fee, then they're not gonna run the program.
Right. Because if they did or came close, then we would worry about a special fund so that we could more easily track it. But we, we could definitely just put the personnel under the buildings and grounds person, um, bring those revenues into the one-on-one general revenues. And, um, if that, you know, if it's definitely going to be expenses more than, um, the revenues.
Do we anticipate this person joining in twenty twenty-four?
No.
No?
I guess, still need to figure out if we need to get a line item for the project, right?
I guess when she said.
Is that what Susan wanted to?
Or do you think she wants like us to be setting aside annually stuff to go into a pot?
I mean, it might make sense to kind of like with the acquisition for the community garden, put some aside on an annual basis. The hard part with community garden is we are gonna be talking with the township board at some point to kind of get them up to speed on that project, and to make sure that it's, you know, all good to move forward with that project, um, as well.
Yeah, if you, if we were fortunate to receive, um, successful grant funding with the Sparks Grant, that would be the first thing we would do, is have a joint meeting with the township board and kind of go over, obviously, we put in for that grant with a no match. So that would be an all-out, that would be a heck of a grant. But we would move towards, you know, doing that and getting those policies, um, done pretty quickly. Get everything kind of put together, and get with the township board for, um, approval and blessing too. Is anything, is there anything else in here that maybe each of you wants to see necessarily? And then Sarah and I could work a little bit on generating some numbers based on where we know you are with some of these projects, and what steps you're at with them.
So we recently increased the TART trail maintenance to five thousand, right?
We did.
So we're hoping that's.
Um, that was based on. No, I don't believe it should. Not anticipating it, it would.
I mean, I think we should increase the legal expense and the attorney stuff. Cost of doing projects and everything's definitely costing more, so would assume those fees are gonna go up. So I think it'd be in our best interest to increase that a little bit. Uh, the supplies, I definitely think increasing that just for having funds for the random things that come up. Signage, mailers, any promotional type stuff that we need. I think twenty-five thousand a year for the land acquisition, I think, continue to do that. If not, maybe up it a little bit. So if we do come across something, land isn't getting cheaper, so.
Do we have to buy it in cash? Are we like able to finance? How does that work? Like, could we use sixty-nine thousand just as a down payment, or would that have to be?
Yeah, the township's, I mean, never really done that. The, anytime that I've known them to acquire property has either been through, like a negotiated, like a discount sale, or a grant, or donated land.
We were eyeballing a specific property.
Well, yeah. Let's not even talk about it. Gets me going.
And then, with Susan's.
Oh, I hear blush is nice. I haven't been out there yet.
With Susan's, uh, I think recommendation of knocking the ten K, uh, maintenance down for Mount Holiday. I think probably five grand seems more accurate there, but I think that's still, the visioning and everything there. Sure, that's gonna be adjusted. And then, um, I think maybe Grace McDonald, um, park improvements. We seem to be struggling with some funds there, the wood chips and doing some maintenance stuff around there, so that's our busiest park. Maybe, uh, increase that a little bit, as it is, I think, the biggest, most popular used park.
Ever know, we might have that warming hut built, and after that, you know, people are gonna come to the park, increase use. You might wanna have some hay bales at the bottom or something.
Yeah.
I don't know, that, that's probably more liability.
We may, we may look at too. I always have the engineer take a look at the parking lot over there, because when we put it in, we talked about, you know, keeping that up and in good condition so that we can maintain that, um, surface as long as possible, just like a road. And so I'll ask them, and he did look at it last year for this year, and didn't think it needed to be done, but I'll have him take a drive over there too.
What happened with the, we did the resurfacing of the tennis courts and then the basketball courts?
We did all three, actually. Tennis, pickleball, and basketball courts. We did that in, um, twenty twenty, I think. It was during COVID. And it was about thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, and we really should budget in for that in some frequency. Um, I did talk with the chair in between meetings. You guys approved us for two thousand and something, um, for cleaning.
Say, did that happen?
Uh, no, not yet. Um, one, I wanted, I found out that that is literally just for the pickleball courts, and those three repairs. So we're gonna make sure, and Zach and I said, yep, we'll, we'll do that. But what Dan and I talked about is, we'd really like to watch and see what they do, and see if we can do that in-house for the rest of them. Because when I talk to them, I'm like, oh, that's just for the pickleball. What if we add the other ones on? Well, you can imagine that price tag was pretty hefty. And I was like, okay, let's just, let's get these done. We're gonna be on site to see, and Dan and I talked, you know, we wanna see, are there three people? Are there five people? Or is there one guy? What type of cleaning agent are they using? What type of, um, equipment are they using? So we'll make sure that we just kind of pay attention to that, and they're there, um, when they're cleaning, so that we have a good, we can make a good informed decision on whether or not we can, um, handle that in-house or not. And then we'll have to see from there on the budgeting for it.
I mean, if it's a piece of equipment, we can do it once or twice a year ourselves, maintenance. Might be a good.
Yeah.
Good move, since we do have nice courts.
Definitely. But, you know, it, it, it is, um, it's an investment that thirty-five thousand for those. So, yeah, we, we definitely wanna be careful too, on what we use, because, so for example, I wouldn't wanna just, someone could say, oh, I'll clean them for you for, you know, a thousand bucks. Yeah, except they use a pressure washer on the highest setting with the narrowest, you know, tip, and they just degrade your surface, you know.
Is there any kind of warranty right now?
No, we're out of that warranty. It comes with a year, so when you do it, it's a year.
And how long were those coatings supposed to be good for?
You know, I, I knew you were gonna ask that question. I was trying to remember who said it, and I.
Sorry.
I wanna say he said like seven to ten years.
Okay.
And I'll confirm that with him when I talk to him about the pickleball, because we played phone tag for the longest time. I mean, I was like dialing and leaving messages, and today, of all things, I couldn't pick up the phone, because I was in a meeting, and I was like, I know, I know that number. I know I know that number, and sure enough, it was him. I was like, oh, if I'd have known that, I would have walked out to, to grab it. But I'll give him a, a buzz tomorrow.
Okay. So, yeah, definitely need to keep that in mind when we're doing budgets of, when resurfacing is needed. It sounds like a big.
If we're gonna dump sand in our beautus number five, then that'll be, uh, something we wanna think about, number five park improvements.
Were you allowed to dump sand in the?
No, we're not, we're not dumping sand. We're, um, there, we are allowed to do beach area there. It's very small. It does fit.
For the ADA.
Oh, yeah, true.
Yeah.
You know what this is, right?
Yeah, slope, the mat.
Mat, yes.
Yeah. That shouldn't be, we should be pretty good with that. I don't think that'll be too awful bad, but you're right.
Sand's pretty cheap, overall. Yeah, that's like mulch.
Maintaining that, that mat, you see it at other parks. It's covered with sand.
Does anyone else have anything for the twenty tour, twenty-four budget? No, I gave my thoughts and Susan's.
I'd be curious if there's like a five-year, if you can click on all those GL reports, you just do add five years, does it do that? Like going back to twenty nineteen, so you could see like, oh, that year we did a hundred grand, that was tennis courts, three years later, do it again.
Yeah, I mean, I could go back on the history on this, for sure.
If it's easy, I wouldn't mind looking at it.
And I usually do that, I do that with all of our accounts to see. And one of the things, that's what I'm not super fond of, that I would like to do, is do like more of an operational budget, and a capital budget in a separate fund, so that we have an operational budget, and we know every year, like, how much that is to do. And then we'll have the general fund, which can, you know, go up and down, but we're not set up that way. So we can look at being set up that way, and, yeah.
Different bank?
Well, just a, just a different fund, but still, yeah.
Okay.
Great, so we'll bring you back a spreadsheet next month for you to ponder over some more and make some more changes too.
For sure.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, um, move on to public comment. Does not look like we have any public left. Moving on, upcoming meeting dates, um, September eighteenth, um, open house, starting at four.
In this room?
Either here or in the parking lot, but at this, you can come here.
Yeah, yeah.
So it would be great to have all of you here for the two hours, but even if you can give me some of your time, um, that would be great. Um, I'll probably send out an email and kind of say, hey, let me know, so that I, you know, I have some staff. And then between four and six, you know, well, four and five-thirty, there's staff here in the office too, that I may be able to, to borrow if needed.
Be able to be there by five at the latest, but I'll try to get out early if I can.
If you're able to make it by four, that'd be great.
Yeah, I don't need anybody before four, like, we'll get it all set up and all of that, so I don't need prep. I just need bodies to help answer questions for anybody that's here, participate. You're all members of the community, so you get to vote and participate as well, um, for input, so, um, yeah. And then our regular meeting to follow, which, like I mentioned, we'll have debriefing on that, and then the budget. And. I don't remember what else, but anyways, whatever else we find for the year.
Maybe update from our beautus, like five, maybe another, once we get the grill, grill, grill situation. Maybe there'll be another one of those.
Oh, another change order.
We are behind schedule. Obviously, you can tell that if you go past there. Um, and they hold up, as we heard at the last board meeting, is, um, the permitting with the county. They had, um, just some holdup with that, that they had to work through, and, um, they're done with that, so. They're getting everything in order.
So like.
Timeline, like if it's not done by this day?
There is a timeline with, um, an amount, like, they can be, um, financially penalized if it goes over a certain time. However, what's typical and standard is if there are mitigating factors, adjusting that for that. So the engineer was meeting with the contractor today to go over those mitigating factors and to negotiate that, so. And we have done that before on a project, um, the first year I was here, because I remember sitting in those meetings. That's fun.
Okay.
As long as it's open by June. My tan has suffered.
All right. Well, I think we can adjourn the meeting for. Oh, eight twenty-two, August twenty-first, twenty-twenty. All right, meeting is adjourned.